And just so everybody knows, I officially started recording.
All right. Just waiting for John to join us here.
Yeah, I'm not seeing him try to join.
I know. Does he need the link again, maybe?
That's what I'm gonna try to jump on. Excuse me if I look like I'm not paying attention, but I'm gonna try to jump on and send him the link again if you missed it.
Okay, okay.
So I just sent him the link again.
Okay.
And Nate, if you wouldn't mind, from a public side, give us a thumbs up if you can hear us and everything's working well. Awesome.
Hopefully we'll get him connected in here in just a minute.
Yeah. And just so everybody knows, like I said, if for whatever reason you have to mute yourselves, just raise your hands because I don't believe that you're going to be able to unmute yourself. And he's it.
All right. Welcome, John. Glad to have you. So we're gonna go ahead and get started here. It's about 7:06 right now. We're gonna have about an hour and 10 minutes. So by about 8:15, we want to be finishing up on putting our goals together for the outcomes for the first initiative, that is the traffic congestion one. And so just to get us started, one of the outcomes we're looking for, let's start with speeding in neighborhoods is greatly reduced. And you will see that there are recommended initiatives on page 13 down at the bottom. And these are to really get us thinking. It's not necessarily that these will be the goal because they're very general. But they should get us thinking in terms of, all right, if we want to reduce speeding in neighborhoods, what are some of the things that we could consider doing? What are things we can do that will help us move toward that outcome of reducing speeding in neighborhoods? So I'd just like to open it up for comments and thoughts about some things that we can do that would move us toward that goal. Yes, Linda.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
And so I know there's a lot of concerns with cut-throughs. And I'm wondering, you know, is there a way we can prevent cut-throughs in some specific areas?
Can you move a little closer to your computer? It's a little hard to hear you.
I'm just wondering, I know that cut-throughs in some of these neighborhoods is a problem. And so I'm wondering, can we install some sort of speed bumps, speed tables in the areas or reduce, you know, not allow traffic to go through certain neighborhoods at certain times of day? I know that's done in some other communities. And I know that could be something that would fit our SMART goals, which would be attainable when you measure it. You could see if traffic's reduced. I don't know what kind of investment that would take, but that's my first thought.
So if we're, so the idea of reducing speeding via speed tables or restricting the hours someone can go through a neighborhood would be two things. And so to move toward that goal of reducing the speeding in neighborhoods. So that would be one thing. And when you think about the different neighborhoods, would it be something to think about in terms of identifying the different neighborhoods that perhaps need that type of help?
My thought on, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear Linda. I apologize.
That's all right. Okay, we're all getting used to this.
I get it. My thought on the matter is, do you strategically improve certain roads to actually provide better traffic paths and at a higher rate to avoid people using those neighborhoods as cut-throughs? So I think of Goshaun and Sawmill, for example, where, you know, they're very narrow. And I believe Chief, you could probably tell me, I think it's 25 mile an hour. So people use that and they jockey around those roads and end up using the neighborhood. So if you actually made strategic improvements to specific roadways and whether it be through widening and increasing the speed to a reasonable rate, then you would be able to eliminate a lot of the cut-through.
Okay, so.
Couple of points here. Fundamentally, number one, if we eliminate all the cut-throughs that forces all the traffic to the main roads, and we're already complaining about congestion on the main roads. So eliminating cut-throughs to the point of closing streets and things like that isn't going to help traffic move on West Chester Pike or 252. It's just going to increase that traffic volume. So maybe instead of going to three lanes, you have to go to four lanes on West Chester Pike. So the cut-throughs to some extent help reduce congestion on the other roads. Nonetheless, we do have a program at a place in town for traffic calming. You know, where we can build things like speed tables and chicanes and all kinds of other things to get people to slow down and create roadways that are not seen as cut-throughs. A couple of points, though, under state law and the ordinance that we adopted, consistent with the state regulations, that has to be initiated by the residents on that street. And secondly, 75% of the residents on that street in a vote have to accept the implementation of those traffic calming devices. So we can't, as a township, just simply go through and identify, yeah, we think you ought to have speed bumps here, 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 and here. That's something that has to be initiated at the local neighborhood level. And then it has to be at the agreement of 75% of the neighbors on that roadway. I mean, we're happy to do that. Anytime a request comes up, we study that street, that particular roadway. We make a recommend, where we get input from our engineer and our police department as to whether that's a candidate. We can conduct the surveys. And if need be, we can install the traffic calming devices on that street, provided that 75% of the residents thinks that's the great thing to do. If not, there's nothing that we can really do with that. We can't force people to put in a speed hump. That's a speed hump that interjects a vertical impediment into the flow of traffic. If people aren't paying attention, could cause them to spin out of control or hit somebody or something like that, yes. It's their own fault for speeding, but yes, it's going to be all out of pocket books when they sue us for not following the state regulations to put this device in, in the first place. Roads like West Chester Pike 252 obviously go without saying, we can't put traffic calming on. But along with that would be some roads like Goshaun Road, for instance. It's a state highway. Generally, state is, we can't dictate the placement of traffic calming devices on state highways. And generally, state doesn't permit it on state highways. So while we could maybe install some things on places like Sawmill Road, we can't do anything on Goshaun Road. So that's just my thoughts.
So John, what about, do those regulations you just talked about apply to temporary speed tables and things along those lines?
There are certain provisions for temporary speed tables. I mean, there is no easy way to construct a temporary table, though. So, you know, if we're gonna spend a few thousand dollars to put a speed table in, whether it's permanent or temporary, it's still a few thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, we looked into it, yeah. They are expensive.
And if we take them out, then, you know, that's expensive to take it out if we decide it didn't work. So, yeah, I guess you could try these things temporarily, see if more people would accept them. But, you know, the other concern I have too is emergency response. When you put something in like a speed table, yes, you have to slow down for them. That includes the fire truck speeding to your house to put out your fire. That includes the ambulance speeding to your house to save your loved ones from, you know, certain death. So you are interjecting slowdown into emergency vehicle response by one of these traffic calming measures. So it's just something to think about before we just decide that we want to put them everywhere.
So that was one suggestion, the traffic tables. And does that mean that there maybe needs to be a look at some of which streets, which neighborhoods are even in need of that kind of thing?
Well, again, that would depend on the neighborhoods themselves, the residents of that neighborhood coming to the town and saying, we'd like you to investigate traffic calming on our street. We had that on Sawmill Road and we investigated it. I believe we did lower the speed limit on Sawmill.
Yes, we did. We did.
So Linda had her hand up.
Linda had her hand up, okay.
Can you hear me, Andy? No. Can everybody else hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
You're very faint, yes.
Andy, you're having trouble.
Yeah, I think what I was just thinking to that point, John, is I'm wondering if we could bolster the community's awareness of that traffic calming ability, that they can come to the township. Because I think that could be a way where we could figure out through surveys, could be one way, what neighborhoods really want these changes. But also, I think, and then we pinpoint those areas. But another idea would just be bolstering that communication, which I know that's one of our other strategic initiatives that we want to focus on is just helping with the township communication with the community. And I think this could be something where a lot of the communities don't even know that this is available to them. So that would be a way where we're still following the regulations of, you know, if your community needs 75% agreement to have a traffic calming device, but at least let them know that that's an option.
Yeah, we can get something on a township website fairly quickly to remind folks of this. I know when we passed the ordinance, we had some publication of it, but we can certainly do that again, you know. And you certainly are correct, a lot of these issues do center around a communication issue that hopefully you're going to address in one of the later discussions.
Kathy, is it possible to put up on the screen now some of the suggestions that you've been recording for us?
Sure. Let's see.
Just so we can kind of see the ideas we have now. And.
Can you see that?
Yes. Can others see it?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, all right, so let's keep going. Way to prevent cut-throughs, repair main roads to eliminate cut-throughs, speed bumps, letting the public know. Also, I think we mentioned, yes, we have identified which neighborhoods need help, okay, and communicating. That would be good. What other thoughts are there from the standpoint of being able to affect this issue? I'm having a little trouble seeing everybody. Let me see if I can put everybody up here now. There we go. Okay. Here we are. There we are. I can see you now. Other thoughts? Others have any other thoughts about this idea?
I had, so the township, we looked at and identified several roads where we received complaints about traffic. Ellis Avenue, Sawmill Road, Rhodes Avenue. And last, I think it was the end of last year, we looked at those roads and looked at investigating, getting temporary speed humps to purchase those, so we could put them in to, in these roads that we've identified where there's issues as a temporary measure to make sure that the outcomes we were looking for was what was actually happening. Make sure there wasn't any unintended consequences that we weren't ready for. Unfortunately, with the coronavirus, that's kind of thrown a lot of things into, out of the mix. And right now, it's something that's been put on hold. But there's, you know, as a township, we had looked at temporary speed humps, purchasing them and being able to install them. If it has the impact that we were expecting, take them up and make them permanent, put permanent ones in, and then being able to move the temporary ones to other locations and, you know, test them out on different roads.
And Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. We ran into a problem with actually purchasing them because I believe there's only one vendor that was not co-started. For those of you that don't know what co-stars is, it's a state contract that we don't have to go out to bid for. And there was only one person willing to sell them to us, but they were not co-started, and there might have been a legal obligation in purchasing them. So that actually, as Chris said, that kind of got put on hold with the coronavirus, but that's something the township was investigating right before all this happened. And with that being said, just so everybody knows, we have, we are 20 minutes in, so we have about 40 minutes left.
Hey, Rich, with the speed bumps, it is something, the reason there's not many vendors on co-stars is because under state regulations, they're not really legal.
Well, that would make sense.
You know, just deploying them out there could be problematic. You know, again, just worried about putting a township into a liability situation.
Absolutely.
I, John, I think they were speed humps. They were the larger.
How long were they? Measure along the roadway?
To be honest, I don't know.
Okay, and we can have this discussion offline. That's fine.
Right, so we have some, we have some thoughts here. So if we wanted to put these sort of into the form of some type of goal having to do with, you know, one of the recommendations was to review concerns for traffic and speeding and maintenance around each neighborhood. So we have one there that says to identify neighborhoods, if I'm understanding what we were saying. So one goal might be to identify neighborhoods as one of the things that could happen. If I'm just reading through our list here, to identify the neighborhoods and communicate. And then we have one to communicate to the community what, the fact that there are options for them if they are having a traffic problem, a speeding problem in their neighborhood, that there are some options for them to request assistance. And the idea of looking at the roads where there has been a complaint, all as ways to begin to move in the direction of resolving the speeding in the neighborhoods and reducing it there. So just from what you've come up with here, are there other thoughts about how we could word a goal that would help us get to this outcome of reducing the speeding in neighborhoods? Is there another, is there another goal to come out of this? Or are these the main ones that you're thinking of? What are we missing here from the discussion so far?
Well, I think part of it is, when you talk about preventing cut-through traffic in the neighborhoods, the getting PennDOT to synchronize the lights along West Chester Pike and 252 to keep traffic moving through the township and not, you know, instead of quickly enough so that people aren't looking for, you know, cut-throughs to avoid traffic that's backed up on West Chester Pike and 252. I think the resynchronization is part of the improvements that are being started now on West Chester Pike, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you're correct, Chris. In fact, I mean, we are in the process right now of widening West Chester Pike to three lanes from school lane to, I think it's whatever, St. Albans there, just the other side of 252 east. And that is phase one. Phase two will be to extend that three lanes from, all the way from Boot Road west, all the way east to Bryn Mawr Avenue. Once that's done, that should vastly improve what flow on West Chester Pike. It's just going to take time till that's done. I don't expect the project that we're, that's currently underway is not scheduled, according to PennDOT's information, to be done until April of next year. So we at least have to wait through then to see what happens with the traffic flow once it's all done. None of the traffic signals on the Pike are, most of them are not quote "hours" right now. They still belong to the developers who are doing the work and now PennDOT who are doing the work. So we have limited ability to re-time those signals and make things happen. PennDOT also has a large traffic signal coordination project that starts the Blue Route and runs west through New Town Square. They've had a very hard time with the project, nothing that has to do with the township or anything that we can do or have any control over, frankly. But PennDOT's had a hard time getting that all completed into place and everything, all talking to each other, if you will, from a communication standpoint. So once that's done, once we get our three lanes in, I would suspect we're going to see potential improvements to the traffic flow on West Chester Pike, which in turn should eliminate some of the cut-through traffic through the neighborhoods.
So we're starting to now talk a little bit about the traffic congestion and the flow part of it. So some of the, let's talk about what are some goals that you might be thinking of in terms of that traffic congestion and significantly improving the flow? We've had some discussion here, so let's kind of pull together what some of those ideas are to improve the traffic congestion and flow.
Can I just chime in for a minute?
Yes, Linda, please.
So I think that would help with traffic congestion and flow. It's not going to necessarily help with traffic where people are going, you know, from Billy to West Chester or, you know, vice versa on 252. But I think what we could really do is improve the amount of sidewalks we have. And that's something that I think is, or in the amount of bike lanes. I think a lot of traffic congestion outside of just people passing through our community is because there are no other options for people to move and get to where they want. So, you know, if you want to go to Whole Foods and then go to, you know, you have to drive. So I think if we could make room for other ways of people moving around, that is something that I think we could work towards within five years.
So Linda, and John and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe back in March, the board approved us to go for a DV, and don't quote me on this acronym, a DVR PC grant to make bike lanes all the way around the township. We went for that, but from what we hear, the fund, the township unfortunately did not get granted the grant. They had three times as much applicants as they had money. I called the state and I asked, or I called DVR PC and I asked if we got this, we didn't get the grant due to our application or because of funding. And they ensured us that it was just because of funding. So the township does board pending approval. The township would submit the exact same application next year for a bike lane that encompasses, I believe, two-thirds of the bottom half of the township. So that is, that is on our agenda already, unfortunately, just because. So that is, that is on our agenda already. Um, unfortunately, just because of the virus and the state freezes, we didn't get it this year.
It's also part of our trail master planning process, uh, again, trying to create, uh, those alternate, uh, alternative to vehicle type of connections throughout the town. So you are correct, Linda, we do need to have, uh, more sidewalks. I'd always be a proponent of that. One thing though, to keep in mind in Newtown, uh, sidewalks are an assessment issue. So if we decide that, you know, we want to put sidewalks down your street, we're going to assess you for the cost of that sidewalk across your property. So i- i- it's okay to put sidewalks everywhere, but the, the residents are going to be assessed for the cost of those sidewalks. I mean, but I, I certainly agree with you that, um, we do need more sidewalks. I mean, I walk everywhere. I walk from my house to the AC to the post office, uh, you know, to, to Fellini's, to the Whole Foods. Uh, I, I saw, I'm in one of the areas of town that does have sidewalks. Some of the old areas of town have sidewalks. We can walk lots of places. But you're correct, yeah, there are a lot of areas of town that don't have sidewalks. This is why whenever we see a new residential development, we're always pushing for the construction of sidewalks. You'll never hear me agree to waiving sidewalks. I mean, everybody should be building them. We get into fights with developers, you gotta be putting the sidewalks in. So, and I think we do need to look at those connections and figure out where we're missing sections so that we can make sure there are alternatives to sidewalk or to driving your vehicle all over town. The, that entire town center is being developed with the concept of being able to move around that place without having to get in your car. You know, to walk from the Whole Foods all the way over to the, to SAP and, and things like that. So that, that's, that's the concept we're trying to promote. Uh, certainly we could look into putting sidewalks elsewhere in town. But again, understand that, that's assessment issue too. We start putting in sidewalks, we assess those residents that, uh, the sidewalk passes in front of.
When you think about the, uh, traffic congestion and improving the flow, uh, in the comments that some of the residents made, they have quite a few suggestions on some ways that, uh, some of the lights could be timed differently and, um, adjusting the amount of time, for example, in a school zone right on, um, Route 3 in a way that doesn't endanger anyone. And I'm just saying that there are a number of suggestions from residents in our, uh, materials we have, uh, that could be considered as, um, potential ways to, uh, improve the traffic congestion and, and the traffic flow.
Certainly look at, yes, Chris, timing of school zones to make sure they coincide with when the schools are open. But that, we, i- i- it's somewhat dictated by regulation, but certainly it has to be consistent with, you know, when the schools open. And we don't want school zones starting hour before the school opened. Uh, and, and that's not so much the problem. It's the, the trick is after school closes in the afternoon. I mean, there's, you know, where do you end that? Do we end it when the school's closed? And if you have after school activities, that's too bad. So i- i- it becomes a tricky situation to try to, to, to regulate exactly when they should start. But certainly we can look at that, uh, in conjunction with the schools that we have and their opening times to see if there's room for any adjustment, if you will, to reduce the amount of time the school zone is displayed.
Right.
I think we're talking about two things here though. I, I mean, the more I, the more I listen, you know, we have main circulation through the township at peak hours through, on major highways, uh, being Route 3 and 252. We should probably have somewhere the latest traffic study that details specifics on those roadways. And then I think the other thing that we're talking about that's kind of getting mixed up with the first topic is the actual neighborhood issues. So it would be important, at least in my mind, to know what neighborhoods are experiencing it. I'm sure that, uh, you know, Chief Linda already has some kind of analysis on what they're finding there when they do their speed testing. And that would give us a baseline to really start talking about specifics.
That would be, that would be.
Because I, I, I go back, I still think that the main arteries of 252 and 3, we have to develop alternative parallel routes. And I, I don't know north, south, if we have a good option to that, maybe media line. But, you know, when, when you go east, west, I think Campus Boulevard could be one alternative parallel route, going through, uh, Troop Farm Road and that, that way around. I know that there was a previous plan that showed a, a roadway that came out through the Cornerstone Development, met up with Bryn Mawr Avenue. I don't know where that stands in any kind of development scheme, but that would certainly be an order to get you around the, the core of the township. But I think the parallel routes are key and we won't know it unless we have specific, a specific traffic study.
Well, that, that's, we do have a traffic study from.
Yeah, just work, Chris, then when you're done. Go ahead, John, and then, and then Chris.
We, we do have a traffic study from 10, 15 years ago, uh, which is what created this Bryn Mawr Avenue bypass. That, that is in existence and we are actively trying to pursue that. Uh, we do own the property across Dunwoody from Bryn Mawr Avenue to connect into the roadways on Cornerstone. Uh, the township actually owns that property. Uh, the engineering alone is in the $100,000 to $200,000 range just to get the, to get the road designed, or in a way itself, it's about a million dollars. We have in the past applied twice, I think, to DVR PC for funding over the last five years and have been unsuccessful in getting that. Now, once that's in, yes, we do have an effective bypass. It would be via Campus Boulevard, Troop Farm Road, through Cornerstone and take you back out to Bryn Mawr Avenue at the traffic signal there. It, it would, we would anticipate that would relieve a lot of congestion on Westchester Pike. That is underway. It's just a matter of coming up with the money to be able to do that. I mean, you don't have to wait for grants. We could build it tomorrow. But again, that's more money. We have to spend more debt and, and we also have to keep in mind that we don't want to really want to be raising taxes to do that. So, um, you know, it's one of those things that's there. We just, it just has to be built.
So I have, I have two things to say. I didn't mean to cut you off, John. One, we have about a half hour left.
Rich, excuse me. Chris has been asking to, uh, have a comment and then we'll follow up with you.
Come on, Chris.
Just to backtrack for a minute, the, uh, one of the comments was about the school zone, uh, timing on, along Westchester Pike in front of St. Annie's and that it runs from 2:30 to 4:30. The reason it starts at 2:30, that's when the Marple Newtown High School lets out. So any students who walk to school that live on the north side of Westchester Pike have to cross Westchester Pike and that's where they should be crossing. So that's why the school zone is active from 2:30 until 4:30, um, or I don't know if it's 4:30 or 4:15, but that's when, uh, St. Anastasia lets out and everybody gets out from there.
Okay. Well, suggestions. Yes, Rich, go ahead.
So I just wanted to let everyone know we have approximately a half hour left. And just to piggyback off what John said, um, we, the DVR PC grant, um, the one that we applied for this year that we unfortunately did not get, um, I do believe it included the, the bypass in there. So we are, we're actively seeking it. It's, um, becoming a very lucrative grant to get. Let's, let's put it that way. Um, we're, George and I spent some, some hours trying to get it, but for whatever reason, the, and knock on wood, I hope it was COVID related, um, and we'll get it next year. But, uh, we will, we plan on submitting it with the, the bypass in there next year as well.
Could that be one of the goals is secure funding through grants?
Now you're putting a lot of pressure on me.
Yes, that could absolutely be one of the goals.
Now you're putting a lot of pressure on me. I don't like.
I, I'm pretty sure the board's committed to do the Bryn Mawr Avenue bypass as soon as the, the money comes up. Uh, unless we somehow decide we want to spend all our money on roads and do that in one year instead. But, uh, we were definitely committed that if we can secure the funding, we'll get the engineering started and get that road built. Because we all recognize that that could be a bypass and we also recognize that that could be a bike route, uh, you know. Uh, we, we're, we're in fact under the road program. We're trying to stripe Campus Boulevard and some of those other roads, Troop Farm Road, some of the roads we're repaving as bike routes to connect with eventually a Bryn Mawr Avenue extension. So you could have a, a bike route, if you will, to address some of that alternative vehicle, uh, mobility we'd like to have.
Yes. So adding bike routes to any of the bypasses that, that are, um, suggested would be another, another part of a goal. Definitely. So, uh, as we're kind of moving through some of these, uh, we have some ideas here. Let's, let's kind of go on to talking about, um, there, uh, roads are in good repair. And one of the things, um, that was on here as a recommended initiative is, uh, work with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to address the 15.78 miles of state roads on how they're maintained and what can be done to improve traffic flow. So this one kind of, uh, crosses too. And John, I see you shaking your head.
I was actually thinking what John was and I didn't, I didn't want to be the one to say it because it wasn't.
I appreciate comments that we have to go do this with PennDOT and we have to go do that with PennDOT. And I spent 33 years working in around and for PennDOT. Um, you know, it doesn't matter. Okay. We're, we're not going to go as Newtown Township and say, hey, PennDOT, our roads are terrible. You gotta work on our roads. They're going to say, we hear the same from every other town and we'll get them when we get them. We can try, I mean, quite honestly, the residents have more legislative pull than we do as a township to, you know, continually bombard their elected, their state elected officials regarding the roads. I mean, continually bombard them. We can do it as a township, but the township of Newtown doesn't elect the state senator and state representative. The residents of Newtown do. Um, but there is no magic formula. It's not a matter of we're not asking or we're not asking the right questions or asking enough. Uh, I mean, the word from PennDOT is right now that they are so far down in revenue that, you know, while there's a lot of construction going on now, that's all money from previous years. Not going to be a lot in the future. Is, as much as everyone wants to use infrastructure to try to jumpstart the economy, there's no money for it. We derive most of our funding in Pennsylvania for roads from the gas tax. People are driving, not driving like they used to. There's a huge deficit in driving miles, if you will, which means there's going to be a huge deficit in road money. So that's going to mean they're going to be paving less roads and repairing less roads than what's going on now.
I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
About the only, the other thing we could do, not that I'm suggesting, this is a great idea. A, a board prior to the current one, a long time ago, accepted Gradyville Road, which was formerly a state highway. And now we're stuck with it as a township with repairing it. I would not suggest that, uh, concept with any other state highways in the town. But that would be one way to better control the paving. You're never gonna, we're never gonna take over 252 or Westchester Pike or probably not even Goshen Road, but maybe St. David's Road or other roads like that. You know, certainly you could investigate that with PennDOT. I'm sure we said, geez, we'd really like to have those roads turned over to us. They'd say, sure, but do we want them? And, and I'm not sure we want to add that to the tax base. So I, I, I appreciate comments about PennDOT roads. I understand them. We see those regularly at PennDOT. I talk to PennDOT on a regular basis. There's not a lot we can do about them. They're state highways and it's, the residents have to hammer their state elected officials to, on a regular basis, to get those roads in better condition, get more money funded, so we can keep those roads in better shape.
So communicate to the community and residents to contact their state representative. What other, any other thoughts people have about, uh, now, I realize the current situation is not so good, but if you were looking forward, is there something we can do to begin to prepare for, uh, let's say a time when it would be possible to do some of that?
So one of the things from a financial standpoint that I've been looking at and reading about is, um, kind of piggybacking off what John said. People aren't driving as much this year, so the liquid fuels dollars that we get from the state actually, uh, won't hit until next year. We have a road program in place in the township to.
Five million dollars, five million dollars to spend in the show of roads.
So we have a road program in place that we, we, because the, the municipal authority project that happened, we did a, a bit more road than we thought we were going to do this year. And then nobody anticipated COVID happening. So, um, everything I've been reading is saying that the, the state money trickling down in liquid fuels tax is going to be, or I'm sorry, liquid fuels dollars is going to be less next year than it is this year, which will affect our long-term, um, I, I, it's, it's, it's a 25-year plan. We have a 25-year plan on how to, we, we can repave the roads and, um, like I said, COVID, it, it's kind of throwing a wrench in everything. Um, but like I said, just picking back off of what John said, it's less people driving equals less liquid fuels dollars, which equals less money for the township.
We are, we are spending $5 million on the road program this year, which is more money than we spent probably in the last eight, nine, 10 years combined.
Correct.
Maybe we were bad in last year's not spending more money, but nonetheless, we're spending $5 million this year on the road program. Uh, come April of next year, we're going to have, uh, Westchester Pike completely repaved from east to 252 all the way to school, well, actually all the way to, uh, Ellis. You're gonna have a brand new surface on Westchester Pike from that distance. And five years beyond that, you'll have a brand new surface on Westchester Pike from Boot Road all the way down to Bryn Mawr Avenue. The state theoretically, according to what they tell us, was also planning to pave 252 this year. Now generally, the, uh, state road program doesn't start after the fiscal year, which was July 1st. So I don't know where that stands, but it was on the plan to repave 252, uh, this year. So I, I don't, uh, and this year in state talk means before June of 2021. So, um, I, I don't know where that stands. We can certainly find out. But, you know, given all that that's coming, we are going to have substantial improvements in the roads in Newtown Township within the next year or so.
Right. Mike, I don't know if you have any comments here about any of this that you'd like to offer?
I'm just listening to John and everybody else and I, I have nothing to add.
Okay, okay. Andrea or Chris, I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to weigh in on any of this. Anything other, any other comments about goals for that?
No, not for me.
No. Okay. So, uh, let's, um, talk a little bit here about, um, whether there, I'm sorry. I thought I heard somebody. Uh, the township, uh, one of the initiatives, uh, recommended was township should look at an all encompassing plan to determine if private roads should be taken for dedication and could be used for public good. And I, we talked a little bit about, you know, do you want to take some, uh, state roads? And we said no. So I don't know what thoughts there are about, uh, whether there are any private roads that could be used for public good with respect to the township. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but I can, I can add some thoughts on that. I mean, we, we don't have a lot of private roads in, in the community. I mean, a lot of them are centered around the brand new developments. You know, for instance, Lister, uh, all those roads are private. Uh, they have gates. I'm not sure that, while, yeah, you could maybe the, uh, you could coming south on 252, make a right turn through Lister and end up on going west on Goshen Road, you could avoid the intersection of 252 and 3. I'm not sure the residents of Lister would want us doing that. Secondly, you know, part of the reason that we don't take dedications roads is because the developers don't want to build the roads to the township specifications. You know, none of the roads in Lister are built to township specifications. So it's not a question of whether we want to take the roads or not. It's a question of the residents of the town that, or of Lister that own the roads would have to improve the roads to township standards before we would even consider accepting the dedication of those roads. And, and I'm not picking on Lister. That's the only one I can think off the top of my head where we have quote private roads, some of the roads in the, uh, most of the road. Like for instance, is the town center a private, but the developer wants it that way. He does a pretty good job maintaining them too. So, um, there's a couple still, I'll call them paper streets in the fourth precinct, um, that in some respects, we've been told, don't you dare try to take our road because the residents would forever approach us to ask us to vacate the right of way. So I, it, it, you know, we don't, we don't have a big demand in town for people telling us, please take our road. And I can't think of any that would make traffic flow better. If we did, we would probably take that, uh, for dedication. You know, for instance, uh, Troop Farm Road and things like that, that we've accepted the dedication because they are an integral part of the Bryn Mawr Avenue bypass.
So we've talked about a number of, um, items here and I wonder if we can kind of shape some more of these into, um, goals with, uh, some, a little bit more specifics to them maybe in terms of how, um, in terms of, uh, when some of this might be able to, to happen. If we go back up to the neighborhoods one, um, we've got some goals here, uh, that can build on each other, like identifying the neighborhoods. So, um, identifying the neighborhoods and, um, communicating to the community that. that there are options for reducing speeding in their neighborhoods. What, what does anybody think in terms of when something like that might happen? Is this something that could be done in year one or would it take longer than that? What, what thoughts does anybody have about how we could make one of these more specific, specific as in terms of the timeframe? So I, I wonder if you were going to identify neighborhoods, what kind of time you think that might take to do something like that? Anybody have any thoughts on that? Andrew, yes?
Would, would that come from the neighborhood survey?
It, it could. Identify, yes, from a survey of the neighborhoods and identify those neighborhoods that have a problem. So.
I, I think it would start there and then determine, you know, where they feel the biggest problem is in that neighborhood and then begin to talk and discuss and see if there's the consensus. I believe John said they need 75% and the neighborhood, neighborhood could basically take that action upon themselves. They would have to be involved intimately.
So that would be communicating to them the fact they can do that?
Sure.
I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but isn't every neighborhood going to say that they have a speeding problem? If somebody came, if somebody came to my house, I don't think I have a speeding problem on my road. But if somebody came to my house and said, when you signed a petition saying we want more police officers or speed tables or something along those lines on my road, I would say, yes, absolutely.
Well, well, I do think that we have to first get the information as to what neighborhood and then possibly do some speed study and see if it's factual.
Okay. I was just playing devil's advocate for a second.
You bring up a good point, a good point.
Once the neighborhood comes to the township and says, we'd like you to investigate traffic calming measures, the, the police and our engineer conduct the study and report back to the board. It says, here's the current situation. And then if it meets the criteria for installation of traffic calming devices, then the resident survey sent out and 75% of the people have to vote for that measure.
Right, right. So is that a, so that might be one of the first things that would, would happen? It could, could be communicating it, identifying the neighborhood, surveying them?
No, I, I think communicating to the residents that this program is available and if they're interested, we let the township know and then we can conduct necessary studies.
Studies, right. So would that be something that could be done next year in year one?
We can start on immediately, we can get something up on the website, letting folks know that, that this is there. And by all means, we can, you know, when they come in with the results or when they come in with requests, we can study those requests and start, you know, acting if need be. And that can all be comprised as part of our future road programs as to what traffic calming measures we need to put in. My only concern is that if residents want traffic calming, asking us to study it right now may not be a good idea, only because there's not a lot of traffic out there. COVID world. So if you're interested in, you know, you're telling me there's lots of speeding and lots of cars and things like that and I go out there and study and there isn't, you're going to look at me and go, well, that's not right. Well, it might be because of COVID. So moving on it instantly may not be the thing to do, but you know, if that's what the residents want, we're happy to do that, you know.
So it's more of a, a timing thing where that.
The whole concept is the residents have to come to the township and, and request it on a particular street. It's, it's, we can't dictate where traffic calming should go. It has to be a resident-driven request.
Right, right.
So this is a good time to say that we have about 10 minutes left.
10 minutes left. So what are some other things that, some other goals that we talked about that maybe could be made a little more specific in terms of improving, let's say, traffic congestion flow? Are there items there that we could start on as a, as a way to begin working toward that?
About the secure funding for the bike lanes and maybe creating a, instead of just a traffic study that looks at automobile flow, a, a study that can analyze where there are lacking, sort of what John said, some where areas within our township are lacking alternate ways of travel. And then maybe.
So.
Study.
Go ahead. So if we're, if we're trying to put a timeline on this, like I, I think Anita has been trying to do, I think identifying them might be the first year and then securing funding might be the second or third year. And the only reason I'm saying that is just because of what's going on with COVID. The state has seemed to freeze all grants. So if they're short in revenue this year and we're still dealing with COVID, there's not much to suggest that they're going to free funding up for next year.
Yeah, but Rich, we already applied for some of these grants, so too, in the past.
That's correct, yeah.
So we're in the process with some of these items. I mean, you know, one or two of them.
Yes.
Yeah, the DVR RPC, I have gotten back that we got denied for 2021 already.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, so that, so that would be a 2022, we could submit it in 2021 again for 2022.
Okay.
So we can do that. All right, are there other, we have some others. I don't know what you think about these, you know, right now, I, I hear what people are saying about COVID-19 and traffic studies that we're, we don't have the flow of traffic right now. But at some point in time, that may, is that something that would make some sense once we get back to normal, whatever that is?
Yeah, I think, I think we could do this after we, later in the year, maybe, if things get more normal.
Yes, okay.
I think that will depend also on school transportation. What happens, how are schools going to open back up? And are they going to be providing transportation? Because that, that will greatly affect traffic.
Yes.
Good point.
Good point.
Chris, I'm wondering that some of the comments here had to do with more police presence during the higher traffic times when people block the box and so forth. What thoughts do you have about, about that? Is, is that something that would make some sense?
The root cause of that, and I believe they're talking Westchester Pike and 252, is the timing of the lights.
Yes.
If the lights were timed properly, that would not happen.
So who's in control of timing the lights? Is that?
PennDOT.
PennDOT, okay. Is that an issue that can be explored with them?
As a goal, I think you might want to put down upon completion of the improvements to Westchester Pike, that a study be done on the timing of the lights. That could be more of a long-term goal because we're not going to be able to do anything with the timing while the work is undergoing, ongoing on Westchester Pike. But once that work is done, certainly a, a study looking at the timing of the lights could be done to, you know, see if there's any improvements. Now, in all likelihood, once it's done, it'll flow better, only because the study was already done as part of the light design. But that doesn't mean that we can't go back there and look at it.
So that would be another thing that we could, could take a look at. We've just done a major road repair in the township. Would, would a goal be to have a schedule moving forward for roads we know need repaired and starting to look at how they might be funded down the road? Is that another possible goal?
Well, we do or did have on the township a road program that listed all the streets from the township for the next 25 years and when they were at least planned to get done. So that is something that's available. People can, I believe, get on their finer street and, you know, figure out when it's supposed to be done. Now, we don't follow that blindly because we adjusted each year. Instead of doing one street, one area town, one street, another town, we try to make decisions about combining them and things like that. And George, the public works and supervisors do go out and look at the roads every year and adjust that. But that schedule is generally followed. So we, we do have a plan going forward in the next 25 years on where, how the roads are supposed to be done and what roads are supposed to be done and when, so.
Yeah, that is, that is, that is absolutely correct. One thing that we, the supervisors chose not to hold off on this year was the road program. So that, that program is still going on. And Anita, just, I don't mean to be annoying, but you have five minutes left, just so, just so Steve knows I've been doing my job.
No, no, that's, that's, that's the purpose of, of helping to keep us on track here. So are there other, are there any other suggestions for goals? We've got some things going, are there other suggestions for goals that we haven't talked about yet? Roads, we talked about.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
What Chris was talking about and it sounds like they, their plan was interrupted, but the testing of specific areas that they already identified, we sort of mentioned that. But I think just a continuation of that plan where they're testing temporary speed bumps in the area where, or traffic tables. And then if, and then they're going to, then they analyze whether it really is an issue and then they would consider following through and then deciding whether that would become a permanent installation. I think the goal would be just continue on with that, that project because that's exactly what needs to be done for, you know, one part of this initiative.
So it's continuing with those studies?
And, and the actual testing of the temp, with the temporary, yeah, I guess that would be a study, but it's also then, then taking, taking that data and turning it into a permanent installation. And will that be within five years? I don't know how that would fit. With that temporary testing to determine where, where would make most sense to install permanent traffic calming.
So Rich, how we doing here?
Um, if you guys would like to wrap up, we are about three minutes early. But since we're the group that has to jump to another meeting, why don't we conclude now? And we can all take a bathroom break or whatever you want to call it. And just make sure that you go back into the original meeting and I, we'll see you guys in three minutes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Yep.